Hey, good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for the Town of Rockland for Tuesday, November 17, 2020. Please direct your attention to Selectman Larry Ryan for the Fledge of Religions. Larry, do the honors.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Larry.
You're welcome.
Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It is also available live online at www.rpsrockland.com/tv. And within 24 hours via video on demand at YouTube Rockland, please go to www.rpsrockland.com for further information. First on the agenda, we have community announcements. Doug Webb, Healthcare Worker of the Week.
Thank you, Mike. We actually have two healthcare workers of the week this week, both of which were nominated by Mr. Daniel Cohen Brothers, who's the administrator at Webster Park. The first is a nurse. Her name is Valerie Finord, and Valerie is a nurse at Webster Park. Been working there for over a year now, and she's been a nurse for over four years. She's someone who has quickly become a mentor to other nurses at the facility. And she was originally born in Haiti and now lives in the town of Avon. And the second healthcare worker of the week is a CNA certified nursing assistant. Her name is Lunice Isma, and she's an aide at Webster Park. She's been working there for the past three years. And she's been a CNA for over six years. She is originally from Haiti and now resides in Brockton. And in particular, the administrator at Webster Park wanted us to know that both of these staff members show incredible courage every single day to their patients and their fellow staff members, and they were very excited to get this award. So we're pleased to announce that. There are two other announcements if I could, Larry. I mean, excuse me, if I could, Mike. The first is. Sorry.
I can understand that.
The first is the winter parking ban. I just thought I'd quickly read the press release from Police Chief Llewellyn. He's announced the all-night winter parking ban will take effect on all public streets and roads in the town, starting on Tuesday, December 1st at 1:30 a.m. Residents and visitors will not be allowed to park any vehicle on any public street within the town for more than one hour between 12:30 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. Courtesy tags will be given out during the first week as a reminder. And beginning on Tuesday, December 8th, at 1:30 a.m., violators may be issued parking tags for a violation of the all-night winter parking ban, and the fine is $25. There may also be times during the winter months when vehicles may be towed without prior warning due to excessive snowfall accumulation and the need for the Highway Department to clear the streets of snow. To find for impeding snow removal on a public way is $50, and your vehicle may be towed at owner's expense. And the Police Department asks for everyone's cooperation of both residents and visitors during the upcoming winter months. Hopefully, we won't need to plow much, but I did want to mention that. And then the last thing, if I could, Mike, I didn't list it on the agenda, but it is another announcement. I'd like to share my screen. Hopefully, everybody can see this. We just wanted to help promote the Girl Scout Troop 69144. They're partnering with a food pantry to help families celebrate children's birthdays who might not otherwise be able to afford one, and they're they're holding this drive here outside of Town Hall on Saturday, November 28th, from 10 a.m. to noon. And in particular, what they're looking for are things like paper plates, utensils, tablecloths, balloons, streamers, birthday candles, you know, cups, napkins, those types of things, so that children in the town can have a happy birthday in case their parents weren't otherwise able to provide those things. And this is obviously a project of the Girl Scouts. So we had that promoted on the sign outside, but I wanted to give them an extra promotion for this really important drive. And that's all I have, Mike.
Thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda, minutes, open session minutes of November 4th, 2020. I want to take a motion.
I'll still accept.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Your motion is second. All those in favor. Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain. I wasn't here for that one.
Absolutely. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Miss Diamond?
Yes.
And myself. That's unanimous. Okay, next on the agenda, under new business, library trustees, appointment of two trustee vacancies for Mass General law, Chapter 41, Section 11. John Ward, Carol Cahill, Tiffany Williams. So for the people watching from home tonight, we're joined by the Board of Library Trustees, who, according to, you know, Mass General laws, if they have a member that is no longer seated, they're able to seat a member through their vote, through a vote between them and the Board of Selectmen to fulfill that seat until the next scheduled town election. So with that, I'll welcome the library trustees tonight for joining us, and thank you for joining us. And I'll turn it over to Madden Chairperson Patricia Foley to just kind of give us an update as to how these seats became open.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and all present. The four trustees who are participating with me tonight at tonight's meeting are Gina Khan, Cal Mahoney, Ken Zabuzki, and myself. As you know, Mr. Chairman, two elected library trustees moved from Rockland, resulting in two vacancies on the board. Three people have expressed interest in filling the positions. John Ward, former library trustee, who also served as trustee chair and treasurer. He served for three years, one year as treasurer, three years as a chairman. And Carol Cahill, former library trustee, who is currently head of English Department at the high school. Carol served for five and a half years. And we have Tiffany Needham, a resident who is currently a member of Reimagine Rockland.
Thank you. So, you know, typically, you know, when when we come across a situation like this, you know, and we mentioned it to the school department, we find ourselves in somewhat of an awkward position trying to appoint people to another board. I know that we wouldn't necessarily, you know, like, like something like that to occur, you know, us telling you who needs to be on your board. So, so the way we try to do this is, is I'll leave it up to, you know, a trustee to make a motion or anybody make a motion. If you have any thoughts or discussion on the matter, feel free to make a motion, and then I'll go through, if we get a second, then I'll go through the trustees before we go into the Board of Selectmen to vote. Okay, so I see Janet Can.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Charen. These are all very good candidates. But because of the transition the library's gone through in the last few months, and because of their experience, I would like to nominate Jack Ward and Carol Cahill at this point to fill the positions.
Okay, we have a nomination. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I got two seconds. You guys, you guys are impressive there. That's great. All right. So with that said, now what we'll do is we'll go into a roll call vote. I'll start. All those in favor, Miss Can?
Yes.
Mrs. Zabuzki? Ms. Mahoney?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Miss Diamond?
Yes.
And myself. So, so your two new members will fill those those positions until the April election, at which time you will have two seats open anyway for the election. And hopefully, they'll run, and maybe Miss Needham will decide that she wants to run as well. And well, actually, while we have you guys, I just want to congratulate Miss McNeil, who's recently been named library director by by the Board of Trustees at the last, I believe, their last meeting. Liz, you've done a great job filling in since since Beverly retired. Obviously, it hasn't been easy. It's not the way one expects to take over a position, but you've done a great job from everything that I've heard. And we're glad to have you and glad to have you for a while here in the town of Rockland.
Hello, and thank you very much. Everyone that I work with has been really helpful, and I really appreciate everyone's support. Thank you.
Excellent. So with that, I'll invite the trustees. Your meeting automatically started when we started ours, but you guys, we'll invite you guys to close your meeting, and you're welcome to leave. Don't feel as though we take any offense if you don't stick around. I'm Chairperson.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You need a motion to close your meeting now.
Okay, do I have a motion? Zep? A second to close this meeting?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Carol?
Yes.
Zep? Janet?
Yes.
And myself. unanimous. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Up and bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure to have yous.
Next on the agenda, the 2021 license renewals. So Carrie, you're obviously ready to read all these licenses?
You'd like me to, Mr. Chairman.
No, no, I told Doug that I was going to put somebody on the spot for this. Normally, that's something that we do, obviously, but but since it's COVID and you guys are all on your computers, and we don't necessarily have the licenses all listed in front of us outside of what you have on your computer screen. I think if we just take a minute, take a look at it. We've all looked at these licenses, and we've all signed off on them, I believe, already. So just take a quick look, and we can, I'll accept a motion, you know, approve all licenses pending all obligations have been met.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to make that motion.
I have a second, Matt.
I have a motion. Two seconds. All those in favor, Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Diamond?
Yes.
And myself. All right. That was the quickest we've ever gone through the licenses. That was I know everybody loves doing that one. So next on the agenda, FY22 budget. Doug?
Thanks, Mike. I'm going to share my computer screen again, if I may. Hopefully, you can see we have a rough FY22 budget calendar that we put together. And, you know, last night, we had a special town meeting for FY21, and, you know, we got to get cracking on FY22. So, you know, we're a little bit behind, but we do need to meet the, you know, the deadline of getting something to you and then to the Finance Committee by the end of the calendar year. So we'll get cracking on that right now. And then you can see with the rest of the calendar that we have, you know, we hope to have free cash certified in January. And then you'll see as we get February, March timeframe, looking at Capital Planning Committee, you know, working with the Finance Committee. Hopefully, get Finance Committee votes by March 17th, unless anything unexpected comes up, which the way things are these days, I'm sure there'll be unexpected things coming up. Hopefully, we can vote on a final budget April 5th, and then town meeting is is May 3rd. I did want to go over what I think is more important is some general kind of guidelines and principles for and direction for how how we want to approach this budget season. Because in particular, this is going to be a really hard one because of the the financial impacts of COVID. So what I'd like to do, and I've talked to Biz extensively about this, as well as the other financial department heads. And we're, you know, going to continue working on this, but before I I put out the directive to department heads and get working with the school department, I wanted to make sure we're all on the same page in case you had any different direction. So first and foremost, you know, going in FY22, we want to avoid cutting services and avoid any personnel reductions. You know, that that's always our goal. We're not overstaffed anywhere. So, you know, we certainly don't want to cut back from where we're at now. We think it's prudent to assume for budgeting purposes, level state aid funding compared to our current FY21 levels. You know, we were, we were very conservative last spring, not knowing what was going to happen, which was the right move. You know, we've since then, we've gotten some updated info from the state. So, you know, these numbers appear to be real. So we, you know, rather than assuming, you know, something lower than that going into next year, or assuming, you know, any kind of unrealistic increase, we think we should just level fund our state aid assumption. Similarly, we now have a quarter with three months of actual data on our local receipts. So we think, you know, we'll annualize that, and we think we should just level fund it. We don't see the economy really turning around dramatically anytime soon. As is always the case, you know, we don't think it's appropriate or prudent to use any one-time revenue sources to help balance the budget. If you all remember, we were forced to use three of them when we did FY21. We used 500,000 from the stabilization fund, 250,000 from OPEB, and $130,000 from free cash. So we obviously, that's not a sustainable practice. You know, we know it was raining. We knew we had to use our rainy day fund, but we can't plan on doing that again. So that's nearly a million dollars that we're in the hole, you know, if we if we don't do that again. But another way to look at it is when we were forced to take those actions back in the spring, that was before we got the better news from state aid, and the extra state aid was about a million dollars. So in my mind, they they kind of wash. But just as a general principle, you know, we should not be, we should not plan on using one-time revenue sources to balance the budget again. What I'd like to do, assuming you all agree, is give out directions to department heads when we send out their budget request forms, is that we would like to see level funding in their budgets, except for what's contractually obligated. You know, union raises that are already agreed to, or any other contractual obligations, or anything that's critical that has to be, you know, increased or spent that can't be deferred. But other than that, I'd like to see level funding. Ideally, we'd want to repay what we took out of stabilization and OPEB and free cash at some point. But I I think it's an unlikely expectation that we will be able to do that in FY22. But it's certainly a goal that we have. And then lastly, assuming we're all on the same page with this and talking with Biz, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna work on the numbers and try to get the 70-30 split on the projected revenues out to the school department at the end of November, or the, you know, first week of December, which is slightly off from the calendar I just showed you, but but pretty close. So that that's kind of how we're looking at things, and, you know, Biz is on the Zoom, so I encourage her to, you know, correct me or jump in if she has additional info. But I'm happy to answer any questions or see if you have any different direction that you think we should take as we're preparing the budget.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
I would just like to make, say that to Doug and our entire financial team, you've led us in the corrective, in the correct direction to go. Conservation and with our funds and everything, and everything is sort of working out to our benefit as well as could be expected, and we get an awful lot of thank yous for that. And, you know, we'll just play it day by day as the as the way goes on, because that's what we're living, we're living day to day now. We're like paychecks, you know? We never know what's going to happen. So Biz and Ollie is Jen and Doug and and Hope Human Resources people, thank you. Seriously, you've got us in good shape. And, you know, we'll survive this, and we'll survive it well, much better than a lot of other people will because of you guys, and the town owes you, believe me, because we know what you're doing. Thank you.
I appreciate it, Larry. And, you know, it truly, this is not just words. It truly is a team effort. You know, we have a financial team, you know, we all, we include our, you know, Judy Hartigan and John Ellard and our assessor Deb, in addition to Biz and Jen and I, you know. And so we meet as a team regularly, so it's not any one of us, you know, we all catch things that the other person might miss, and we all look at it from a different angle. So it's a true team effort.
No, I can't appreciate it more. And and all of Town Hall, all of our elected officials within the Town Hall area have done a great job with their departments, considering all that we've been through. And thanks to Deli and the Board of Health for, you know, she has to put up an awful lot of stuff. And the regular stuff and not just the COVID stuff. So good luck to Ollie, and thank you so much for doing all your jobs. The town should be very appreciative, and I'm sure they are, and that was represented last night, because nobody really questioned what we were up to or what we were trying to do. We're trying to make the town run properly, and and we are. And the people appreciate it. And I'm going to speak for the people of the Town of Rockland tonight and say thank you to all our boards and all our hired officials and everything that we do for doing what you're doing. Because we're, we're going to make it. We will make it.
So I, thank you, Larry. So I appreciate the conservative approach going with funding. I think just keep in mind, I know we were able to reinstate some cuts from the budget this past year, but I know that there were some people that we were trying to get them to a place where their salaries were, you know, appropriate for the job that they're doing. And some of them that took a financial hit on behalf of the town, maybe try to keep those people in mind if there is extra additional funding available. And I do agree, I understand that we won't so be able to pay back money that we borrowed from from some of our different funds right away. But, you know, if there's any amount, you know, I'm not suggesting that we pay back, you know, 100% on all of them. But, you know, I think as a sign of good faith, you know, something set aside for each of those those accounts to make sure that that we can continue on that path. You know, something else, I think, you know, going forward, something for the Board to think about. They're working on the budget. We should be working on our priorities for for next year, for the town, for the town administrator's office, just like we did last year. We'll try to find a date, probably at some point in January, and we'll sit back and we'll set a date where we can have a brainstorm, you know, workshop like we did last year and give give Doug and his team some direction for the next upcoming year. So start keeping some of those things, you know, goals and priorities that you guys want to see, you know, and projects that you want to see done. All right. Keep that in mind, and we'll be talking about that a lot more over the next month and a half or so, anyway. Doug, back to you.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate what you said. Those were good points. I also just want, I know we've talked about this before, but I want to thank everybody, and it's probably a lot of you here, as well as prior finance committees and others that did the work that the town did in the past to get the stabilization fund up to where it was, and that, you know, made the the good moves in the past that enabled us to have positive free cash, because without those actions in the past, we wouldn't have been able to balance the budget the way we did. And I know from some of you that that was a lot of work over many years, you know, to right the ship before we even got here. So I want to just acknowledge that, that those were critical actions you all took in the past. And the other point is, just for the public, again, I know it seems weird, you know, to have be conservative and then possibly add money later. But with so much, it's just critical that we operate this way, because it's always easier to add money later if you get good news, and it's the worst thing you can do is to be over aggressive in your revenues and have to cut midway through a year, because those cuts are twice as hard to make, literally, and much more devastating. So I think we think we're on the right path. So, thanks.
Perfect. Next, other new business not reasonably anticipated.
I have none.
Nothing, okay. Number five, old business, 1116, 2020, special town meeting recap, Doug.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we were, we were all there. I was personally, I was really pleased. I was happy because everything was organized well. I want to thank the seven town employees that volunteered to be ushers to help make sure we could fit people in the room. You know, the turnout was good in that, you know, it wasn't it wasn't too many people that we couldn't safely accommodate. But it wasn't just 15 people. I believe in grand total, we had around 69 people attend, which is pretty good for the middle of a pandemic, holding an indoor event. And again, for the public, the reason why we hold a town meeting in the middle of the pandemic is because that's the only legal way towns like us with an open town meeting can get our get our business done. But I was just, I was just very happy, and everybody complied. Everybody wore masks and distanced, and it showed you can, you know, you can make these types of things work. And I appreciate everybody's work behind the scenes, Biz and everybody else that helped get the numbers together, prepare the warrant, and got us to be able to, like you said, have something done without any any real problems or questions and moving forward.
Thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda, 320 Concord Street Auction Update, new date, 12/8/2020 at noon.
Thanks. So, yeah, I know there's been quite a bit of interest in the public about about the auction of the House of 320 Concord Street. And what I put in your packet was the the information packet that went out to any interested party that that reached out to the professional auctioneer that we had. This is a unique situation. I was going to say very unique, but I remember an English teacher correcting me once that you can't say very unique, because that's redundant. It's either unique or it's not. So it's unique. And because we have this non-conforming lot with a structure that has to be taken down. So at the auction, we had a number of people attended, ultimately only two actually registered as official bidders with their bid deposit. One of them, after not too long, decided they were no longer interested. There was one person who was very interested, and for 30, 40 minutes was working his phone to his advisors, and I think was very close to purchasing the property, but ultimately decided not, decided not to bid, just should say decided not to purchase it. So the auctioneer is continuing the auction. It's, as you said, and it's printed on the agenda, it's going to be held on December 8th at noon. And just to highlight again, the lot as it currently stands is not buildable, so the house will have to be taken down within 90 days, unless, and I want to stress, unless the successful bidder is able to rectify the deficiencies with the lot, which again deals with frontage, lot width, and total lot area. And theoretically, those things could be corrected if a combination of two abutters would agree to give some land. So we'll see what happens. Since the auction didn't get a successful bidder on its original date, our phones have been ringing off the hook with people who have read the newspaper articles and have heard about it with all different kinds of ideas. And it's sort of interesting, you know, some people have asked ideas, well, can I do, you know, this or that? And, you know, we're all very careful. We don't give legal advice to anybody. It's buyer beware. You buy as is. Do your due diligence. Have a talk to an attorney, call the building inspector. But if something is very clearly not allowable, you know, we'll tell them that, and we'll point it out in the zoning bylaws. I'm sorry, the way the lot currently stands, you wouldn't be able to do that. But there's a lot of interest in it now, so I'm cautiously optimistic that there will be somebody who's almost more of an investor, maybe somebody who might decide to purchase it on the cheap, maybe choose to spend the money to demo the house, and then maybe it'll be a more interesting sale to a direct abutter who could, you know, enlarge the size of their lot, that type of thing. So we're cautiously optimistic there'll be more promotion again with the auctioneer December 8th, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions if you have any.
Any comments or questions?
Nope. Thank you.
So Doug, as you're saying, I have had, since the article in the paper saying that there wasn't anybody bidding necessarily last time, I've had six or seven people reach out to me asking, you know, the specifics of it and what they can and can't do with a lot. So, yeah, to your point, I would not be shocked if this is really well-attended this next time around.
And one more thing, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned, but you just peeked this in me. It will be advertised, and it will be conducted next time as an absolute auction, and that's a technical term that means, you know, as long as there is, as long as there is a bid, the property will be sold. There's no minimum. You know, the property will move. So that's another way to make it even more attractive. So people know we're very serious. So the highest bid will will get the property.
Excellent. All right. Thank you. Moving on, other old business not reasonably anticipated?
I have none.
Okay. Town Ministers' Report and Correspondence, Doug.
Great, thank you. So I have a few things. Let me make sure I'm on mute. Good. Good news I heard from Senator Keenan's office that our town charter of special act with our town charter of special act with our charter amendments passed the Senate last week. And yesterday it was moved to the House Committee on Steering Policy and Scheduling. So hopefully it won't be there too long and it'll, next it'll go straight to the House floor. So I have to say, this has been really quick action in the state legislature charter. And I really want to thank Rep. DeCose and Senator Keenan and, and their staff because they've really helped usher this through very quickly. So we're happy about that. And as we've talked about before, this is really just phase one of, you know, more charter amendments to come. The next item was just a, a quick update on the CDBG, excuse me, the CDBGCV grant. That's the Community Development Block Grant, the coronavirus federal grant that the town was the lead entity for a, a multi-town grant for six hundred something thousand dollars. So we have our consultant, COG is the, the consultant that's administering the grant on behalf of all the communities. And in total, we've received twenty-eight applications. And it's sort of interesting, the breakdown, Rockland received the most, Rockland received ten applications. Appington four, Avon one, Holbrook four, Hall four and Wareham five. So the goal is, is to fund even more. So I don't really have any more details on it, on the exact process yet. But it's good news that the PR, the press releases and the outreach that have been done, you know, has already generated twenty-eight applications from, you know, businesses and others in our communities that, that could really use these funds to keep going. So we're, we're pleased about that. And I want to thank Jen for her efforts because she's really taken the lead on, on spearheading this project. Another item is Jen and I both met with Joe LaPointe from the Joint Water Works. And we met down at the Hingham Street Treatment Plant and I have to say it was a sobering, sobering meeting because we actually went out and saw the reservoir, which is just at still desperately dangerously low levels, you know, we, even though there's been a little bit of rain recently, you know, we are still at very, very low levels. So Joe asked me to still highlight to the whole community that we should all continue to, to try to conserve water as much as possible. It's, it's, it's really urgent, you know, we're it's funny, we joked because Joe's hoping for a, a big snowy winter because a lot of snow helps, you know, regenerate the reservoir and, and, you know, replenish. You know, replenish the supply. Of course, I never want that because I just think of spending money on snow and ice removal at the highway department. But, but please everyone continue to, continue to conserve water as much as possible until further notice. Three other quick ones, I thought I'd give an update on the McKinley Community Center Sprinkler Project. As the board remembers, we hired City Point Fire. They were the winning bid. This is for the, the remaining portion of the sprinkler project, the, the third floor and the attic. So as of today, they're about sixty-five to seventy percent done. The bulk of the lower system piping and the heads are being, we're, we're being finished up today and tomorrow. And if all goes according to plan, if everything continues to go well, they should be done by mid-December. So that's just really just great that the community was able to fund this through Community Preservation Act funds and that we have a, a local, really excellent contractor that's, that's doing good quality work to get that done and to keep the building safe. Sticking with project themes, you know, the library ADA access and parking lot project is just about done. If any of you have been by there, you'll see all the sidewalk and curbing's done. The ramp, which was really the focal point of the whole project, has been completely reconstructed with all new railings. And the parking lot's been repaved as well. And talking to Dave Taylor earlier today, I think he wants to wait until the spring to stripe it just to make sure things will actually stay and stick longer. Cause I think when you do it with these temperatures, it tends not to last as well. But if any of you haven't been by there, I'd suggest you go just, just take a pee because it's, it's fantastic. It's just a huge improvement. And I can't thank Dave Taylor enough because once we were able to assemble a variety of different funds that had been set aside for this, Dave was able to, to take the ball and run with it and get it, design it and get it done in short order and at the lowest cost possible because this highway crew does a lot of the demo themselves and it saves the town a ton of money. So really came out great. And then the last thing is just a little preview that come the end of December and you know, probably about six weeks from now, we hope to be unveiling a whole new town website, which we're excited about. It's going to look very different. It's going to have a, a whole new, much more modern design to it. So it'll look differently. But it'll also be more functional. It's going to be much better organized. On the backend, the, the database behind it will, will also be modernized. It'll be fully ADA compliant. And one of the, one of the things in particular that it will have, which will be of great benefit to the community is it'll have a much more robust, they refer to it as sort of citizen engagement tools. So for example, if there's anybody in the community, maybe they're interested in the Board of Selectmen, say in the zoning board of appeals, you know, you can just go and click a button and go there and sign up so that you automatically get emailed directly to you Board of Selectmen Agenda, excuse me, Board of Selectmen Agendas or Zoning Board of Appeals Agendas. And you won't have to search through a town calendar just to see what's happening. And you can either sign up for them or, or unselect them and, and unsubscribe if you're not interested and all kinds of features like that. So it'll be just much more robust and how we're going to be able to communicate with the public, which is the focus of that whole initiative. And obviously the main thanks there goes to our IT Director, Gino, who has a lot of projects going on right now for a one-man department, but he's going to get this done on short order. And I think you and the community will be really pleased when you see it. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. Sounds good. Next on the agenda, Selectmen's Comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen and the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Mullen?
I don't have anything planned, Mr. Chairman, but thank you for the offer.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Penny?
I also have nothing to make.
Okay.
Wow.
Mr. Ryan?
I do have a couple of things. I, I know that we all thanked Donna Schottall for her twenty years of service to the town of Rockland last night at the town meeting, but a lot of people weren't there and this affords us one opportunity here and, and the public eye to say thank you to Donna and all the, the good work that she's done for the town for the last twenty years and that she'll be missed and, and I'm sure that whoever replaces her will do a great job too, but Donna, you did a great job for the town, but thank you for that. Town meeting, you know, the reason that the Rockland Town Meeting is so successful is because we are all our ducks in a row. There are no out of place anythings. We have everything and so, so the people of the town of Rockland understand what they're voting for and why. And, and that's again, I, I, I want to thank our entire staff from top to bottom for that. And a sad note to the family of Billy Rhino. I'm sorry, he passed away and he was a good guy and rest in peace, Billy. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Eric. Ms. Nyman?
I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving next week. Hope everyone enjoys time with family and friends.
Are we having it?
Yeah, as long as it's under ten people, I guess.
Ten people.
Thank you, Kara. So yeah, I just want to reiterate a little bit what Larry said. I think the residents that did come out last night, obviously it wasn't a full house, but we were able to get get the three warrant articles passed. And, and I, I did want to give credit to one particular resident that, that spoke up during the town meeting and kind of, you know, put something at, at our doorstep to, to kind of consider. And I appreciated the time that he took to talk to myself, Rich and Kara after the meeting about some of his concerns over something that was going on in town, an upcoming project. And you know, I, I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, we've said it several times that, that we're here to, to assist and, and to discuss things with residents, their concerns. And, and furthermore, besides, you know, us as members of the board, Doug and his team are always, always available to the public. You know, one of the things when, when we, we made the hires that we made, you know, we made it crystal clear that, that something that was of the utmost importance to us was that all residents were treated as, as top priority and your concerns are, you know, you, you guys are the customers, you know? We don't have the positions we have and you know, the people in Town Hall don't have the jobs that they have without you guys. So if you have any questions or concerns, don't, don't let it build up, you know, and go, go to these people. They're, they're there, they're, they're waiting. They're, they're willing to answer whatever questions as, as openly as they possibly can. And you know, to Doug's point, you know, they they've never turned anybody away, you know, we, we talked about it briefly, that they're not up there to give people a hard time. If you come in, they'll sit down and answer it as honestly as they can. We've, we've got a really compassionate team up here and I think I think you'll find that I give them a chance, you know, it, it's, it's a different town than, than it's been in years past. And, and I think just, just give us, give us a chance to show that. So to the resident that did speak up last night and, and sat with us after for about half an hour, I, I appreciate it, you know, and I wish more residents would take the time to, to ask us those questions. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, well said, Mike. I just want to say well said, Mike.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Did I hear, did I catch a motion in there? There was a lot of commotion there.
I agree. I'll make the motion to adjourn, but very well said, Mike. Thank you.
So Larry, I got a motion from you?
What the heck?
Okay, you said it? Okay, all right.
Wait a minute, I, I could have first and he could have seconded.
Well, who's on first?
Oh my God, just end this meeting.
I got a motion from
They created chaos, I'm sorry.
Larry. All in favor, Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
What's the question? Yes.
Thank you, yes. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
And myself. Good night, Rockland. Thank you.